Good job.
Good day.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Supervisor, supervisor, I want to welcome everybody here today. Supervisor Smith, be over, lead us in a pledge.
You got it.
You got it.
Classic, the do the welcome.
Mr. Brown over.
Here.
Mr. Leggett.
Here.
Mr. Diamond.
Yeah.
Mr. McDevitt.
Yeah.
Ms. Bramer.
Here.
Mr. Bruno. Mr. Driscoll. Mrs. Frazier.
Here.
Mr. Drossy. Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Dickinson.
Yes.
Mr. Malino.
Yeah.
Mr. Stroud.
Here.
Mr. Wild.
Here.
Mr. McGowan.
Here.
Mr. Beatty. Ms. Duck. Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Ms. Runyon.
Here.
Chairman Garrity.
Here.
Form is established.
Okay. First item of business, I'll open up the privilege and forum of a comment before we get into the discussion on the CDT. Anybody wish to address the board before we get right into the meat of the meeting? Seeing none, I'm going to turn the meeting over to the county minister to start the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate everyone's flexibility today. We initially had this scheduled as a workshop. What we've learned is if we are going to become a member of CDT and we pass a resolution, we need to have a change to section thirteen oh two of public authorities law. There has already been a bill introduced into the assembly by Assemblywoman Warner that includes Warren County in that section, section thirteen oh two. Senator Steck's office has appropriate language to introduce a bill into the Senate. However, would prefer to have a resolution from the board before he introduces that change to the public authorities law. And if we waited and we, our original plan was to do this on the nineteenth of May at the next board meeting, but if we waited that long, we're up against the end of the legislature's session. It may close. They have thirteen thousand bills currently. They're considering about twenty-five hundred that impact counties. And this would just add to that. So we're trying to do everything we can to get it in and give Senator Steck's office flexibility should we choose to go in this direction. So I, I've sent every one of the decision paper with some background on this. We've been discussing this for about two months now, and we've had several meetings with CDT, with Greater Glen Falls Transit, Mayor Collins and Scott Sobchak and Carmen Sil from CDT to basically assess where we are. So I have basically three slides I'd just like to show and talk through. So if we could present those now. And the real question before, I believe, the board today is do, does Warren County need a public transportation system? As you know, currently their transportation system is run by the Greater Glen Falls Transit. They can no longer meet the public transportation requirements. They challenges with drivers, getting, hiring enough drivers to drive. They have eighteen drivers in the normal season. They need to go up to forty drivers during the tourist season. And they have difficulty with that, getting CDT or getting CDL trained drivers to drive their buses and the trolleys. Things they have, they've had to adjust routes. It's caused frustration among residents. It caused frustration among tourists visiting people into our area. And so the businesses that rely on public transportation to get the, their employees to work, particularly in the town of Glen's Falls. CDT has been in operation since nineteen seventy. But before the other option is Warren County. If Greater Glen's Falls Transit cannot succeed or is not going to continue after this year, the option for Warren County to take it over, we're not any better equipped or staffed to assume those responsibilities. There are only two remaining municipal public transportation systems, I think, in the state of New York right now. Municipal trans, public transportation systems that are run by municipalities are failing because it's very difficult to do and difficult to run. And we applaud GGFT for what they've done. Since nineteen eighty-four, they've been in business and they've done phenomenal work, but it's just getting to the point where it's too difficult to do. CDT has been around since nineteen seventy, well-run and well-respected. Every county, there are five counties who are current members of, and I've talked to all the county administrators, and they all just have glowing things to say about CDT, about their responsiveness, about the way they lean forward in the community and engage with the community and take actions to make sure that's the best public transportation system operating in the area. So I think that you know, we, we feel like we would be in good hands with CDT. We all talk about the impact of tourism and the businesses and the people who visit the area. But this was completely lost on me until this past week when our planning department brought it up. Our DSS, probation, public defender, assigned counsel, the DA, all rely on public transportation to get people their customers, that their people they're representing to the municipal center. So the buses that you see going around the municipal center all the time. Critical for our services that we provide to the citizens and residents of our county. And again, that is the tourism angle. So let's, the next slide. Benefits if we choose to support CDT. We continue our much-needed public transportation options. Again, I said CDT is well-run. The current routes and services they have that are run by GGFT will continue. We'll see in great technological enhancements that CDT brings to the table that we don't have. And there's always a possibility of expanded services. So and every discussion I've had with CDT, they said, we'll look and where it makes, where it's practical, they'll expand services. They're not, there's no guarantee that all our services are going to continue as they are, of course. But I'm confident after talking to harm that there's no intention to cut our services, that they have every intention of making it a viable, strong transportation system. And we'll get connections to Saratoga and Albany, which are workforce development. Folks are saying, and a lot of the chambers are saying that that's, that will be critical to help bring additional employees into our area who can't live in our area because we have housing shortages. So you'll hear lies I say all the time. Transportation and housing are the two biggest obstacles to us getting the workforce of the future into Warren County, into our businesses and into just county. So last slide is the cost. We've said back and forth. There is no exception to this. It's one-fourth of one percent of all mortgage recording taxes over ten thousand dollars. Looking back over the past ten years, that amount goes between eight hundred thousand and one point five. The lowest is eight point, eight hundred and forty-six thousand and the highest last in twenty twenty-one was one point five seven million. And it's inversely proportional to the mortgage rates. So when the mortgage rates go up, the mortgage recording tax goes down. When the rates were low, we had a lot of mortgages and refinancing and things like that happening. And the money goes up, but right now we're running about fifty-three percent behind where we were last year. And last year's was one point three million. So we're probably going to come in some point around eight hundred, maybe eight hundred and fifty thousand again this year. And that doesn't matter to CDT. That's just the statute that says this is how it's done. This is how the counties who are members of CDT pay for this. The amount of money is whatever the amount of money is based on that one-fourth. And we'll have to come up with the equivalent. The key with us is since two thousand and eight, we have been collecting this additional point two five percent. Tax, the additional tax, and it's gone in for general fund expenses. So that's money that the county will have to figure out an equivalent amount to pay. With that, I think I presented all the, everything that I wanted and I just respond to questions as. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Supervisor McGowan, you had a question?
Yes, thank you. Is that eight hundred or one point five million? Is that the total that we have brought in? Or is that just a one quarter? Percent?
The one quarter of one percent. One quarter of one percent.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Supervisor Shroud.
Well, thank you. We collect one point two five percent more stack. So those amounts do reflect twenty percent of the total, correct?
That's correct.
And that's another way of looking at this, and I just wanted to bring that forward.
And Supervisor, Supervisor Leggett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we all agree that public transportation is critical to a lot of our economy here in the county. But this will be shifting the cost to towns that do not benefit directly from the CDT as well. And this expansion of services look forward to, we have not put out any particular contract on this, have we, and what those services will look like? And also just for example, and this was brought up, that if the town Chester has six percent of the county's budget and we're taking a million dollars out of revenues for it, that puts sixty thousand dollar burden onto town of Chester taxpayers to help fund this. We have needs for senior transport and lighter transport. Could those be the options that help the towns outside of the Bolton Lake, George Greensburg, Glen's Falls area?
I think, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've talked about, there are possibly other options that the county can consider. I want to, another issue would be broadband services. I know a lot of you have challenges with broadband services. A lot of you have challenges with road repair. I, I think the county could look at some equivalent way of making sure that the towns who are not going to benefit from public transportation, but will still have to contribute part of the bill that we could come up with some county services that, you know, we'll try to look at a comprehensive package with my help. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor McDevitt?
Uh, I don't have any questions. I, 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 and I have some comments relative to the, the I support this proposal and because I think it makes economic sense for Warren County. It ensures the economic viability of public transportation in Warren County for the, for the future. Employees and employers are matched, creating economic benefits for both. Businesses become stronger and more successful, creating sales tax revenue for Warren County. Employees have more disposable income to spend in their communities. College students can save for their education and be more successful. The function of government is to create the economic conditions to generate jobs and a healthy business climate. Public transportation is it is absolutely needed in Warren County. And what this does is it provides the economic foundation for public transportation for the next forty or fifty years. We have predictability. We have reliability. We have a, a good player, a proven player, and I strongly support the, the resolution as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Bramer.
Thank you, Chairman. It's my understanding that a representative from CDT is here today, and I have not had any opportunity to hear from that individual about the plans for a level of service and also gaining a better understanding of our input as a county into the routes or any changes that might be happening in the future. So if that's possible, I would like to have an opportunity to hear from that representative.
We'll give them a chance when we get ready. Any other comments from Supervisor, Supervisor Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I fully understand the importance of public transportation. And I, and I fully understand that it's not coming to Stony Creek. However, as Supervisor Leggett was saying, Stony Creek will pick up its share of this revenue that's, that the county is currently benefiting from. And while it's only one point three percent, it's still money and it's still money to my taxpayers. For me to, to support this, I would like to see the county look at the towns that don't have cell service. I think broadband is, is pretty much there in most places. But a lot of us don't have cell service and we can't afford to build, build cell towers. We can't afford to navigate the, the regulations of the Adirondack Park Agency. So I would like to propose that the county make it a priority that we have cell service throughout Warren County for everybody. And by doing that, it'll benefit not only our residents, our visitors, but there's a lot of people that need cell service for medical equipment and monitors and stuff like that. So that would be something that I would look for. And I, and I think over like a three-year period to help us help us navigate the Adirondack Park Agency, you know, and help us buy land, build, build towers and you know, get the Frankenpines up and all the rest of it. Cause I think we all deserve cell service. And that, that's what I'd like to see.
Anybody else? Supervisor Driscoll.
Thank you, Chairman. Yesterday afternoon, I had a chance to stop over at Greater Glen's Falls Transit, spoke to Scott. I saw a very engaging conversation with their loan mechanic. A very intelligent, engaging young man who travels from the Southern capital district up here. It's my understanding that as many as half of the, the drivers driving from Glen's Falls Transit also coming up from areas other than Greater Glen's Falls Tri-County region. So from a business perspective, I don't see that as being a really a viable business plan going forward. I think that you know, the decision is obvious and I, I concur with my, my friends from communities that directly impact from this and maybe in the future they won't. Also hopefully that will be the case. I'd like to see as John had mentioned that we, you know, we come up with some type of a equitable plan to up and say it or to provide some additional services as needed in those communities, but move forward with, with this proposal. Thank you.
Supervisor Frazier, do you have your hand up? There's any other supervisors, Supervisor Smith?
Yeah, I'm one of the communities, one of the towns that doesn't really benefit from this today. But I look at this as an investment in the future and I support this. As many as you might know, I spent two years in Europe and fifteen years in Japan. And when we come to infrastructure, again, I think governments, three pillars are safety, security and infrastructure. We are in the stone age compared to these, these places when it comes to mass transit. And I think it's, it's really important that, for no other reason, the connectivity with, with, with the, with the capital and then points south and even points north. And you know, I, I again, look at it as an investment because I, I hope and I'd like to discuss with CDT possibilities of getting roots out to, to, to Johnsburg and to North Creek. And I know that's not today, it might be three years, but three years is closer than never. So I, I think this is a good idea. You got to start somewhere and I think this is a good start.
Thank you, Supervisor Runyon.
I agree with Frank that some of the towns that aren't benefiting should have some sort of compensation. And in our town, I have the same problem as probably Edna and Frank because cell signal is very limited. And I had a woman in my office last week. She has a pacemaker. She cannot connect to her cellphone to send it to the doctor. We could be losing residents who need to move where there is cell service. So I would like that to be some sort of a compensation. And I also wanted to find out now, once we do this, is this a prominent change or are there terms? What if we find it doesn't work out?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's something, actually, we hadn't considered that. I, I think that at any time though, it should we decide, we could always vote to no longer be members of CDT. Is that? I think that's, so, you know, if, if there was a reason that we wanted to take that up, I think that would be okay.
I'd like to give an opportunity to CDT to address some of the concerns. So that's okay first. Okay.
Morning, everyone. I'm Carmen Zill. You folks are very formal up here. I worked at CDT, it'll be forty-two years in July. I spent my whole adult life with CDT. This is personal for me. I'm more than professional, it's personal. This is all we do. We link people and communities. We link people to economic opportunities. I understand your concerns. Job one, though, job one is to make sure that we sustain the operation. Supervisor Driscoll indicated he visited the garage yesterday. We have been helping a good friend, Scott, who I've known for thirty years to keep the service that he has viable and sustainable. Right now, we are their maintenance department. Right now, we are half of their transportation department. So job one is to come in and establish our foundation. Our foundation is built on people. It's built on infrastructure. It's built on technology. Then to assess the operation, to understand the operation, and lastly, but most importantly, at the same time, to understand the community. That's what we do. When we're being here, we'll be a presence. Frankly, we'll be such a presence that you might sometimes tire of us. Because we think there are countless opportunities to be had. Room for expansion, absolutely, right away, not likely. But we can bring solutions from other counties or other ways to handle, for example, senior transportation. There are other ways to handle transportation because some of your, your county is certainly rural in nature. So we're bringing that expertise to you. We have seven hundred and fifty employees like Scott, Michael, like every company. We're short too. We're ten percent short across, across the books, across, but we, we are positive all the time. We'll solve the problem. The job we're leaving is to come in and establish a foundation, understand the community, understand the need, and try to connect people and opportunities.
Ms. Bramer, you had a question? Did you want to ask?
Thank you very much. That's very helpful. I appreciate your ethos there about understanding and sustaining and also the opportunities for growth and our rural connections are going to be very important to serve the needs of our communities that are far-flung. But I think that there are ways to reach them without necessarily sending a bus there. One of the things that I had asked about that you didn't answer was the opportunity for us to have input on how you make changes.
Absolutely. We, we don't make changes without, first, the way we make changes is first, we get the community's voice involved in what we do. You'll see us here having regular workshops, talking about the routes, talking about the service. Honestly, we're not going to go out of changes right away. But Scott and I have talked, resources dependent. We think immediately, we need to earn in the area. There should be more service immediately. There should be more service on the travel lines to connect the tourist industry, I think, in much more stronger and viable way. But frankly, the tour, the tourist industry should, should be part of that discussion. Frankly, we want to participate. We participate financially. It shouldn't be a free ride. So the tourism industry will have an interesting partner with us, but we need to embrace and get them to embrace that change. But we need to involve the community before we change, isn't it after?
I make one more. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one more point. And I, it was in my notes, but it wasn't in my brain when I started talking, unfortunately, but there is, we will nominate a minority and a majority person from each side to the governor to be appointed to the Board of Directors. CDT is governed by Board of Directors, and I forgot to mention that. But so we'll have a, a member of the Board of Directors come, Warren County, who will also be able to provide input.
Good point, John.
Anybody else? Any other questions? Supervisor Diamond?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is more oriented around routes that we have going to South Glen's Falls, Hudson Falls and Ford Edward. Could you tell me how many routes that we run to those communities on a daily basis? Or Scott, maybe you're better off answering that?
Yeah, we have currently, there's one route that goes to South Glen's Falls and one route that goes to Hudson Falls.
That's it. One per day?
Well, it's, as a route, it depends, the, the frequency.
What would be the frequency of travel to those communities on a, on a daily basis?
It varies by the time of day. For example, South Glen's Falls is one of the areas that we've long looked to want to improve service. There's certain times of day where hourly, other times with every two hours, which from a transit standpoint is way below part. There's South Glen's Falls is an example that West Glen's Falls, if you know that. Those are important feeder areas. You've got demographic, good demographics for transit. We haven't had been able to really build on that enough to address that as well as it might be.
Are they proposing to fund this underneath the county partnership? Because that, it's my understanding right now that Ford Edward, Hudson Falls and South Glen's Falls do not contribute other than ridership.
Ford Edward and Hudson Falls currently are, there's that one route that goes through Hudson Falls and Ford Edward.
So is that a plan for us going forward to?
That's part of the existing.
Try to get them to, and how would we go about encouraging them to invest into this program?
That's something that's going to be explored.
Yeah, I don't have the answer there. We're not, we haven't gotten to the, to the level where we're looking at routes and communities investing. Really, the way we, we operate, it's all based on connecting people where there is demand for service and the investment is, the investment, I think, is the vote here. That the county is invested. Excuse me, just one more thing in that South Glen's Falls are, Saratoga County is already part of it. So they're already, CDT is already going to Monroe, but stopping because we as GGFT have that route to South Glen's Falls. So the connections there have got to increase. They're, they're, they're undoubtedly going to increase and they don't, nobody would be making South Glen's Falls will save themselves a little bit, how much?
Six.
Six thousand dollars a year they pay in a local match right now, that they actually will stop paying that because Saratoga County is already a member. So and so their services would clear, will clearly go up and their local contribution will cease to exist. And Claudia, to your, your question about how much influence you'll have, or Carm gave you a better answer than I would give you now. There were, there were changes being made to our services today that none of you had any input in. Because this has been run by my, by, by the city of Glen's Falls solely. So we've made changes to this and we didn't even ask that opinion. And we wouldn't. Because we, it's not made because of whether we want and we value your communities. It's because of what we can possibly do. We made changes last month that are, that Scott's been ripping his hair about trying to figure out how to do this. Right? We're, we're providing services all through the, the buses in Glen's, in GGFT. Spend more time in Queensberry and in Lake George than they do in Glen's Falls. Right? I mean, and, and yet, you know, it's been carried by the, by, well, originally created by Edgar Allen, right? That's what, it was a great idea. We'd love to continue. This isn't about that. We're, we're short nine drivers right now to, to figure out if we're going to have trolleys this summer. Last year, Carm gave us five drivers so we could continue to have those trials. Right now, GGFT would be shut down if it wasn't for Carm Mechanics, because our last mechanic got hired by the town of Queensberry. Not because, again, John, we have a great working relationship, but our mechanic got a better opportunity to go to work for them. So I mean, this is where, just so you know, your influence is growing, not diminishing.
Any other questions? Mr. McGowan?
Thank you, Mr. Trent. Baron and, and Mayor. I right off the bat was there for the original presentation and I was really excited. I think it's a, it's a great opportunity for the county, for our workforce and our residents and our tourism, the J ones. I, I think this is a awesome opportunity and And, and I think it's, this partnership will, is going to work out well. My concern is, is, and I understand for the, you know, for the northern people, that it's not fair. And it's been spoken that, you know, they're putting in their contributions. But when I hear like, we're already going to Southland's Falls, Saratoga pays, but they're not going to pay their six thousand. They don't have to once we join. Why wouldn't those towns and, you know, the city that already pay into this, all right, keep doing that and help offset some of the costs for the, the you know, for the towns that don't get the service, you know, right now?
Well, firstly, we, we can't enter into intergovernment, intermunicipal arrangements like that. Those are municipal arrangements. We, we can't do that. We don't do that. The only source, the only local funding is, is the mortgage tax. That's the way we're set up. That's been that way since we were created in nineteen seventy. And honestly, for us to administer those kinds of arrangements and provide service to only those communities who pay, that's not how we do things. It's, we go to where there is a demand. We go to where we need to connect people, not to who pays us. If that makes any sense to you.
Well, it does and, and it, it just doesn't sound fair. You know, in a sense, but I understand and I'm not trying to knock it. I'm just trying to get the, the figures down. Like, you know, Orangeburg could benefit. Now, we would drive Orangeburg, but it didn't really work out, you know? And, you know, meeting with the mayor and discussing this, you know, we, we threw out some, you know, ideas and possibilities. I mean, there are smaller buses that you could, you know, bring into those areas. Because I would like to see, you know, North Creek, especially in the winter time. And heck, if you're right up there, you could do a skip hop right over to Chester Town and we'll choose an hour count right around the corner. So is that an agreement that the municipality would have to come up? Because, you know, right now, I think Queensberry pays, the city pays.
So let me, let me help you, Brad.
Mayor, may I just for a second, really, it's from a legal perspective, it's, it's two different issues. Right? The, the first issue and the issue, I think legally that the board is looking at is the county looking up at, are we going to become one of the additional member counties in CDT? Is that relationship going to form? The supervisor from Queensberry is asking a, a good question, but it's not the question for today in the sense that it's a question of what relationship, if any, is the county going to develop with its municipalities regarding public transportation, which is certainly a conversation that can occur in the future. And legally, there's an ability to enter into intermunicipal agreements. But it's a different relationship and it's not the, the issue on, which is really the first issue of is the county going to become a member county in CDT?
So Supervisor Stroud?
So yeah, thank you. I, I, first of all, every municipality in this county benefits from public transportation. Public transportation system provides transportation for people that can afford the car so they can get to work and to the stores that are all over the southern part of the county. And the J one workers for the hotels, for the Great Escape provides this economic vitality and economic sustainability that everyone in the county benefits from because it produces jobs and it produces sales tax revenue. And everyone benefits from the sales tax revenues that are generated in the higher economic activity area. So whether you're talking about student who are housing students at SUNY Adirondack and need public transportation, or you're talking about workers, or you're talking about workers in the capital region that want to come up here for jobs because this arrangement would provide a stronger link between our community and the community south of us. So where the jobs are, we need people. This is an absolute must going forward. I think it's a good deal. I think we have to approve this and move forward, and I think everyone in the county will benefit from this.
Supervisor, wow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just some comments along the lines of Supervisor Strong and others. You, you know, over the past, I hate having issues brought before us where we need to make a decision right away. It doesn't give us time to do our due diligence. But I had the good fortune of spending probably more time with the mayor than he wanted to. It was a pretty spirited discussion and I also spoke with Karen. You know, trying to dig into some of the questions we had now. I don't think we have any choice. And I think what is before us today is a decision on consequences. If we don't approve this, what happens? Now, from my understanding, we know said that, you know, we'll keep it going this year. What about next year? I think we all understand exactly what the economic benefit of this is. What about the economic consequences if we don't do it? And I think that's what we should be debating today. And when we talk about the economy, there's something called the, the federal government talks about our economy is the Greater Glen's Falls Metropolitan Area. That includes Southland's Falls, includes Hudson Falls. That's the economic engine that we're trying to keep together. And although there are different counties and different, different municipalities, we all benefit from their engagement with us. Whether we have citizens from Warren County going to those municipalities to work or whether they're coming to help us. So I mean, maybe what we should be talking about is, is this really worthwhile? Or should we let it potentially fail another year or so? So I'm in favor of this and hopefully we can get through both, move forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor McGowan, did you have something to add to more to add?
I am for this. I, I think this is a great move. So.
And I want to turn it over to anybody Supervisor, you know, I didn't. Go ahead.
You know, I sat here and listened to all this and Mr. Leggett and some of the smaller towns. We struggle. We struggle a lot. We get a lot less sales tax revenue. We still have the same problem buying trucks and paving roads and all this. But I'm going to support this. I'm not a hundred percent for it, but I'm going to support it because I think what Mr. Smith said one thing. Maybe not now, maybe not next year, but maybe in two or three years from now, if this grows, some of our smaller towns will benefit from it and I will, I will support it. Thank you.
Amen. Supervisor Thomas?
Yes. Believe me, I, I do understand the importance of this. And I guess is what I wanted to say is, is I've sat here a lot of years and I've, I've supported a lot of things that didn't directly benefit Stony Creek. And I'm prepared to do that again. Alls I'm asking is that, is that the county make it a priority that the towns that aren't along the north way where, where a company thinks it's profitable to build a cell tower. You know, because I've tried two or three times and they basically, you know, forget it. So, so it's up to the towns to do this. And, and personally, our town can't afford it. You know, we can't afford to plunk down a quarter of a million dollars for a cell tower in the five years fighting with the APA to get it done. So that's what I'm asking is that the county makes it a priority to areas of the county that don't have cell service, that we, that we provide the technical support and also some funding and, and chase some grants and try to get this improved. I realize you're not going to reach every corner of the county, but we can do better than we have already. No.
Can I second that?
Thank you. Yes, you can do that. Anybody for the public wish to comment? We'll open up the public comment.
Good morning, everyone. Liza Oxendorf, Workforce Development. I wanted to address just some of the, the concerns that have come up. Particularly Supervisor Leggett's concern about extending to the rural areas. I, I too share that concern and I want the board to know that I'm committed to continuing to sponsor CDL training for our Warren County residents to become drivers for CDT. We have been sponsoring people who want to get their CDL license for many different industries. But if, if you move forward with this merge, I am committing to making sure that we are promoting and marketing with Carm's partnership with CDT. If they agree that we need to expand into different rural areas in our community, I'm committing to recruiting and marketing for people from those communities to get their CDL license paid for from my office. Because those people in those communities know those roads and know those residents. So I wanted you to know that I'm committed to doing that. We have been doing that for CDL drivers, just not enough for GGFT. Right? But I'm committed to working with CDT. We've worked very positively together the last two years with the Bike Share Program. And I just wanted you to know that we will commit to sponsoring CDL training for your residents if they're interested in becoming drivers in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning to the Board of Supervisors. I'm Jim Sipron from the EDC. I'd, I'd like to share with you a couple of thoughts from the voice of business. I've been meeting with local, large organizations, employers, CEOs, some small and midsize organizations as well. If I were to characterize their input on this, it's that the single unifying issue they all face is their ability to bring workforce to the opportunities that they already have. As Liza has shared with you regularly in our economic development forums, we have more than a thousand open jobs in Warren County. We've had more than a thousand open jobs in Warren County for three, four years now. The ability for us to be able to meet our own economic potential means we must be able to create inflow from other places. This is one of the tools you have at your disposal to do so. And without exception, every business leader I've spoken to in the community is not only an advocate for this, but is looking for ways to partner with the county to grow it over time. There is a voice here that is not looking for you to fix their problem. It is looking for you to catalyze the beginning of what is a new era for this local economy. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for you. I've heard some of your concerns and comments though, and I take them to heart. I'm also here as the LDC president. Some of you sit on the LDC board. We're openly discussing right now what are the, the abilities of the LDC, which is within its charter to support lower income residents of Warren County in a variety of ways as to whether or not the LDC could be a partner in either helping to match, create contingencies, create new routes. In some ways, begin to meet some of the issues that some of you have raised. There's another tool at our disposal and we're having a discussion about it again in our next meeting next week. And the third thing I'd like to mention to you, Supervisor from Stony Creek and others that have raised the issue of cellular. I was at Adirondack Day at the legislature earlier this week. It's a single unifying factor amongst all of the areas in the Adirondacks. We have a firm that we can approach this with. It's the broadband firm that we've been very successful with over the last several years. I'd like to work with you separately to try to figure out how do we retool that firm to begin to explore these cellular issues. There's money available. There's a working group available. It needs to be done in parallel. It is not at odds with this. It is in fact a corollary that needs to be invested in at the same time. But all of these things can be addressed and with your positive vote today to accept this merger or accept your membership in CDT, I, I promise there is another day here in Warren County that is even brighter than our past.
Morning, everyone. Gary Thorpe, Lake George RV Park. I'll make this brief. I just wanted to thank everybody for the change in attitude from the last meeting that I attended with this. I'll be the voice of private business. This is the only way forward. I'm convinced I've worked with Scott for years and years and years on this. And this is the only way forward. I applaud your courage in going forward with this. I would just remind the board that before the bed tax was enacted, that the tourism budget came out of the general fund to a tune of one point two million dollars. That's been replaced by bed tax. This will certainly cover the cost to go forward with this. So I would implore you to just move forward with this. This is the right way to go. We thank you from the private business community for taking the courage to do this. Thank you.
If, if there's anybody else for the public wish to speak, if not, I don't see any hands. So I think what we do right now, we have to, we have a draft resolution for you. So we need a motion to waive the rules. Motion by Supervisor Leggett, second by Supervisor Dixon to waive the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Amanda?
Need a motion to introduce, to bring this to the floor?
Okay, we have, do we have a number for?
No.
I'll need a motion to bring the draft resolution to court Supervisor Smith, Supervisor Stroud. Any discussion? All those in favor to bring the resolution to court? Opposed? Okay.
Now you just want to vote on it.
Yeah, vote. You want to do a voice vote or you want to do a roll call? Your choice.
Voice.
Voice. Somebody want to make a motion to approve this draft resolution? Motion by Supervisor Leggett, second by Supervisor.
Another motion, you're just.
Oh, we don't? Oh, we're just going to vote. We don't need a motion. We already did. All those favoring second by saying aye. Anybody opposed? Resolution passed. Okay. Now we're into another. Any announcements? Anybody has any announcements today? It's a nice day and I know everybody wants to get back out there. I appreciate you all for coming. Yes, Supervisor McGowan.
Well, maybe not an announcement. I did talk to our administrator yesterday. And he thought maybe he'd bring up a little something, but this movement from the New York City, from the immigrants, it was a little concerning to me, you know, you know, dropping the, especially when we're coming into our tourist season. Where everything's going to be busy. So I don't know if you were planning on touching base on that or did I jumpstart it there? Mr. Taflin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We were planning to talk, discuss that at the May nineteenth board meeting, but I'll just, I've talked to members of NISAC who are watching very carefully and they'll provide guidance for counties in New York who could possibly be impacted by this. Right now, they don't believe there's any indication that it would impact Warren County. But we'll keep our eyes on that.
Supervisor Dickinson?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Do we have second?
No, I had a prior one.
You can.
Turn it back to nineteen.
Thank you. Roger.